Since we did not have closed session items, I will not defer to our city attorney at this time and move on with an entertainment for the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion? Or is there another item that you wish to address?
Yes, and the other one is the same things. We didn't approve the contract on the city police chief, Callexico Police Chief, yet. So there is no police chief representation. Plus, legally, he cannot be Police Chief yet until he finishes all the paperwork he needs.
There's a motion on the floor by Mr. Kim that says that he approves the agenda with the statement, "No meeting will be held on November 4th, but a meeting will be held the following day, November 5th." Is that correct?
And no police chief's representations.
What does that mean?
Because legally, he cannot be Police Chief until he finishes all the paperwork.
It's a presentation.
That's what I'm saying. He's not Police Chief yet until by the law of the Californians.
Well, Mr. Kim has made a motion which states what I've just said about the election, not having a meeting on that day, but having it the following day, and that not allowing our Chief of Police to make a presentation. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by, please, second by Mr. Castro. All respond by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No.
Motion does not carry. Now I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the agenda as is. Move by Mr. Hurtado.
Second.
Second by Mr. Hodge. Is there something you'd like to say, Mr. Hodge?
I understand Councilman Kim's concern, but I think we need to get to know this. We need to get to know this Chief of Police. And I hope what he presents will be favorable. But to have the opportunity to present is good because there might be some things we don't like. So he needs to have that opportunity.
Okay, all those in favor of approving the agenda, excuse me?
I have to say so of this agenda, this motion.
Did you call for discussion? Oh, he just had something to say, so he didn't call for discussion. So all those in favor respond by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed?
No.
Motion carries, three to two.
So again, we're going to do everything in the light, the people that choose to hide in the dark and use the internet and all the games they play. We're going to come and speak the truth. I'll speak the truth here and with the media from here on out, like I promised you, and I'm going to do it every night. So you know, I've had an incredible, like, fire hose experience of everything that's happening in Callexico. I don't know if any of my police officers are here tonight. I hope they are because I hate what's said about what I said rather than hearing what I actually said. You know that mischief. So I'm meeting with the community. The media is unbelievable. It's like I can't turn the corner and there's some media person that wants to talk to me about what I'm doing, and I talk to every one of them. Because US citizens need to know what I'm doing. There will never be a secret as long as I'm your Chief of Police. And if there is a secret, I hope you stand up here and call me on it. My boss is sitting right here. He's not a shrinking violet, as you're finding out. And he's a great man, but I also know that if I step over the line, he's going to be the first one in front of me saying, "What the heck are you doing?", you know? So that's a great thing because that's exactly what I want to create for my police officers. I'm willing to lead, but by gosh, you better do it by the rules because I'm also willing to discipline. And it's been an interesting journey. The union when I first got here was like, "Okay, we got to kill them now. We got to hurry and get them out of here now. We don't need this guy coming down." And as I mentioned last week, I'd feel exactly the same way if I was a police officer and Mike Bostic was coming in. That would be my reaction. But now they're actually getting to know me. And for the last two or three days, I've been amazed. Literally, I would say 60% of the officers, because I see them a lot during shifts, working at night and stuff, they're actually saying, "Chief, we're really glad you're here." "Yes, we're skeptical, and yes, we don't trust you yet, but we're really glad you're here." Well, that's the best respect a chief could ever ask for is that they're willing to at least listen, see what I'm going to do, and save judgment for later. So I'm asking the city council to do the same. You know, don't pass judgment until you see me doing something because I'm committed to the future of the city. I'm committed to the future of what US city council members want to have happen here. And I'm committed to bringing this city into the light so that no one in this community fears its police or its government. That's why I'm here. So who am I? I'm going to put it in a nutshell so people get it clear that I'm not playing games here. There's a saying on one of your bills, and you can pull any one of them out, and it says, "In God, we trust." That's who I am. If you ever question my vote or who I am or what I'm about, in God I trust. I believe in God, and that's my stance from the time that I live here. So when I make mistakes, I'm going to own up to them. And I'll own up to them whenever anybody's willing to ask. Now, those who choose darkness in the internet and websites and gameplays, I will never respond to them because those are people who live in dark places that don't even have the honor and the respect to walk up to a human being and say, "I have a question. Is this true?" Instead, they spread rumors, not only on me, on other city government officials, people running for council. It's despicable, and I'm just sharing that with you because that's how I feel about it. I also hear stories that I don't believe because I know my police officers. And I want to start out tonight in a very positive vein. One thing I'm clear about in eight days, I have some really good police officers in the Callexico Police Department, and I have a few that I'm really worried about. That's my honest truth. I know that. I can tell by the way they talk to me, by the honor with which they hold the badge, by the respect I see them out in the field if they treat the public when they know I'm not looking because they don't know who I am yet, a lot of them. So I see what my police officer is doing. So for those, I hope they hear my words. What I'm about to talk about tonight is not about them. The things I'm going to talk about is some things that I see about some other people in our organization that give me grave concern. Because I'm not sure how many times I'm going to have the opportunity to get in front of the public and tell the truth. But as many opportunities as I get, you're going to get it. So that's my commitment. And that's how I protect the good police officers in Callexico that don't deserve the rumors and things that are said about them, by telling the truth of those who choose to disrespect the badge and disrespect all my brothers in law enforcement and make all of them look bad as well. That's why they're all here. They're tired of what's being said about our city. I look forward to working with this council and making everything in the light so that we can get back to the business of doing government the way it was built and happened. And I'm committed to that. And I'm proud of my police department. I spoke about overtime. So we've instituted a plan to deal with some of the overtime issues. And you know what I neglected to say because I hadn't even had a chance to meet with the city heads last time? When your police department decides to spend a million dollars they don't have, guess what happens to all your other city services in the city? You lose them. Because the city manager then has to go rob from the other departments to keep overtime going inside the police department. That is unacceptable to me because I'm not king of the city. So when people act like they don't have to follow the rules and disrespect their other general managers and their heads and don't really care, not going to happen on my watch. They're my partners. We all have responsibilities in this city. I look at our facilities. I look at our parks. I look at our roadways. I look at our street signs. It's a crime that we would just spend all that money that could do to make our city better because I could. So it's not going to happen. It's just not the way to do business, and it's not going to happen. And like I said, if I do, I hope they fire me. I did. So I heard lots of discussion last week, some in Spanish, some in English, about bus inspections in the city. And I thought to myself, "Bus inspections? Why is the City of Callexico Police Department involved in bus inspections?" I don't know if you know it, but that's the responsibility of the California Highway Patrol.
We know it.
Okay, so I was really puzzled. And just being honest, I was so puzzled. I was like, "Are you kidding? Why would we do that?" So my port lieutenant said, "Okay, guys, I need to do a little investigation for me." I said, "So find out why we're doing it. How many people in our department that we have that are actually qualified to do bus inspections? Because if we do bus inspections and they aren't qualified to do them, and then that bus crashes, guess what happens to the city's coffers? More money goes out in lawsuits. So we're creating a liability risk on something we shouldn't be doing in the first place." So they go out and they do the research. I call out the CHP. Those troops come, and their captain shows up. And I said, "Why are we doing inspections?" He says, "I don't know. Your chief decided to just take that over from us. We don't know why they're doing it." And then he says, "By the way, they're not qualified. You realize the liability?" He's like repeating what I already do instinctively. So I met with them, and I said, "Okay, as of today, we're no longer doing bus inspections in the City of Callexico. We gave that back to the California Highway Patrol." There's a more important issue. I don't have enough cops to put them out on the street to meet my minimums, and that's why overtime's going through the roof. Why? Because they're doing things they don't need to be doing, like bus inspections. That's not their role in this city. So that's one thing I did to deal with the overtime issue. Next, I met with the head of my narcotics investigation group. Okay? And I said to him, "So how does it work in Callexico? Do we, once you find street narcotic sales and you arrest somebody, it always leads to bigger things, right?" And I asked him what we normally do in Callexico. And he said, "Well, we normally investigate them ourselves." So I said, "Well, isn't there an Imperial Valley Narcotics Task Force?" And the gentleman that leaves that is standing here in the room with us. And he said, "Yes, there is." And I said, "Well, why don't we send them to them?" "Well, we like to do our own, okay? Been a cop a really, really long time. Doesn't pass the smell test. Now, do I think anything's going wrong? I don't know, but boy, we're sure going to look into that right away because that one doesn't pass the smell test." Then I asked this individual who's in charge of narcotics, "I need to see all your confidential informant files because I want to know who they're talking to, what information they're getting, are they reliable?" There's actually a process in the manual about how you create a confidential informant file. He said he didn't have any. And I said, "Well, why don't you have any? Because I don't have any current investigations in the City of Callexico." So I started thinking, "Okay, this makes more sense," in talking to my lieutenants, "that we not do any follow-up investigations, that we actually give it to the task force, that we donate personnel to, to actually do those follow-ups investigation. They have the equipment, the capability, and the supervision to do it right. And it's a very professional organization that all the law enforcement agencies donate to." Like common sense, right? And then guess what happens to all those resources? They stay in Callexico and investigate all the crimes against person and property that aren't being investigated right now because they're busy doing narcotics investigations. I'm more interested in you, the victims of Callexico, having your crimes investigated. So then I find out this individual happens to be a sergeant in my organization. He's in charge of all the internal investigations in the department, or was. He's also in charge of narcotics. He's in charge of all the criminal investigations. So, okay, so now he's a sergeant. He's the first level supervisor inside the Callexico Police Department. He should have never been put in that situation. No one runs internal investigations, narcotics investigations, and criminal investigations in any organization I've met in the world that wasn't a staff or a command officer. And you know why. There's a lot of mischief when you control all of that inside a police department. And at the sergeant's level, it's so inappropriate, I was stunned. So now we've reorganized that. And he's now just in charge of criminal investigations, responsible for investigating the crimes against Callexico citizens that have been neglected for a very long time. I don't know how bad that is yet because I haven't had a chance to really look at that. But they basically said we haven't been investigating crimes in Callexico. That was the response I got. So that was like another no-brainer decision. There are some other investigations going on in Callexico. There's always investigation going on in police department. If there aren't, you should be worried. And there are some. And you know, there are people that are making allegations which I don't know whether I believe yet or not, and that's why we have an investigating process. But part of that is some allegations about missing evidence from our evidence room. I don't take that lightly. Any of you know what happened in Rampart? That's where it started. And so I immediately talked to the sheriff. And as kind as he is, and as overworked as he is, and overwhelmed as he is, he graciously passed it down the chain of command to one of his undershirts. And we've now closed out our locker facility for a few days. And they're going to come in and do a full audit of everything in our evidence room. Any good chain of command change anywhere in any police department in the world, when you come in as a new commander, you audit everything. So whatever rumors you hear, that is the only reason I'm doing it. It has nothing to do with my suspicions. And yes, people have said things. But again, we'll find out. And this is the way you find out. You audit the entire evidence room. And then from this day forward, all of you will be comfortable. The council will be comfortable. The city attorney will be comfortable. My boss will be comfortable. Then we got nothing to worry about. And thank you, Sheriff, because that's an awful lot of hard work for your people to do. And thank you for taking care of us on that. Discipline cases. So now this one, I have to admit, really rocked me more than most. I'm starting to look at a lot of the discipline cases in the department. And unfortunately, because the administrative assistant and my two lieutenants were taken out of their positions in the department at some time in the past, there's no one managing that system. They have no idea where our internal investigations are at, what the status of them is. And I have seen a pattern of complaints against police officers fall out of statute. There's a one-year limit on an investigation. And unfortunately, the mischief in that is is if you purposely let the statute run, then you allow misconduct to happen in your organization. Now, I'm not accusing people of that, but when I see so many in such a mess, I'm really kind of nervous about that. I'm just being honest. And that's not the police officer's fault. That's management's fault. There is like, again, you have to be kidding me. No one knows where all the investigations are, who has them, who's investigating them, and where they are and when they're due, okay? We're going to get our arms around that. We're also, the city financial officer is helping me find a forensic analysis person to come in. And we're going to audit everything that has to do with money and books and how we spend money in the organization and everything else. We have lots of different accounts. And that's just the normal course of business in the chain of command. We want to know how the money's been spent, where it went, and are we okay? So we're doing that. Okay, so some more things. So yesterday morning, I think it was yesterday, doesn't matter what day it was, days are running together. Martha comes in. She's my administrative assistant. And she hands me two checks. One for $104,000 and another for $10,050 from the LA Impact. We have an officer assigned to the regional narcotics task force. And as part of that, we get asset forfeiture money that comes back to the Callexico Police Department that we use to buy equipment. So they're dated August the 12th. The second check is dated, the check for $104,000 is dated August the 12th. So what is that, like two and a half months ago? The next one's dated September the 18th. And you're looking at a pretty sizable chunk of money. And the city's hurting for money because I blew out the budget by a million dollars for overtime, right? And I'm looking at Martha. I go, "So Martha, where did this come from?" Well, it came from one of our sergeants. Okay? Why in the world would a sergeant have $114,050 in checks made out to the Callexico Police Department? And why didn't the city finance officer have those checks? Well, no one has the answer to that question, but I have to get to the bottom of that. So does anyone see the mischief in that?
And sir, do you believe in following the chain of command?
If you have chain of command, you have no organization.
Okay.
If you don't have it, you're not following it.
All right.
If you don't have an organization, you have chaos.
The other one, and I had mentioned to him, Neighborhood Watch. And rather than officers staying in police cars with the car idling, get out and walk and talk to the people. Are you going to be big on building better relationships with the community?
Yeah, you know, here's what I know. I'm already leading by example. I talk to any community member, anywhere, anytime, no matter what I'm doing. And if I root to some of you while I'm talking to a citizen, I think you know why.
Citizens come first.
We serve the citizens. And I can already see it. You know, my two lieutenants, they talk to the community all the time. Martha does. My officers do. Honestly, they're in fear. They're in hiding, and they have been for a long time. And that's why they've kind of disconnected from the community. Because internally, officers will tell me on their own, they're embarrassed about the things they've seen happening in their department. Now, when they get that I'm serious and I care about them and I'm going to do the right thing. So they're more than willing to open up. They just want to know it's okay to do it. And I've made it really clear that I'm leading by example on that.
Here's one, and here's a rumor, sir.
Sure.
Because you said you'd rather have someone talk straight to you.
Absolutely.
You're not anti-union, are you?
No.
Okay. And there's this rumor that you're going to go out and try to destroy the union. You're going to try to, you're going to try to work with them. Is that correct, sir?
They've already pledged to work with me, and I've pledged to work with them. We've had a couple of meetings already. We had another one today. And you know, yes, when they first came to see me, they were letting me have it because of the comments I made here the other night.
Well, sure, I mean, there's apprehension.
And I realized I offended them. And I apologize that I offended them in some of the comments I made because I realize I was way passionate last week.
I'm not saying I believe in that rumor, but that's what I heard.
Yeah, and it is. So I want you to come to my office when we meet. Not because I'm important, but I actually have a plaque from the Los-
Well, you are important, sir.
I have a plaque from the Los Angeles Police Protective League that was given to me saying, "Thank you for your service to the city and to the union for 34 years."
Okay.
They don't give that to just everybody.
One more. For probably most of the people here, they're happy that the sheriff is in here. But there are some people that, I think I'm voicing a concern for some, that they're thinking this way. "What's going on? All these outsiders invading?" Well, I mean, listen. I mean, the sheriff's department and district attorney. But at this moment, you're doing this to, in your eyes, clean up the police department. But eventually, eventually, our department will be independent and self-sustaining. Is that correct with your leadership?
So Mr. Hodge, I'm really glad you asked that question. And thank you for asking me straight up because I didn't communicate very well with you if that's what you thought I was doing, was bringing in outsiders. That's not what I'm doing, okay?
No, I'm just repeating some concerns from some people.
Sure, what people were saying, yeah. So the outsider-
No, no, regular citizens.
So when you say outsiders, first of all, by department policy-
I'm not saying you're an outsider.
By department policy and by the laws of the state of California, the DA's are supposed to investigate crimes within the department. That's by law.
I'm open to learning and being taught, sir. That's good.
And on the OIS part, the problem with it now is our officers, in an investigation, there's officers, there's two investigations going on. One's internal and one's criminal.
Yes.
Every case. There are certain rights that officers are given. And once those rights are given and invoked, those have to be separate investigations. That was not done. So now we have to start over and do them over to do it right.
All right.
Because now both of those are tainted. And that's the only reason I went outside is because on our first shot, we didn't do it right. So now we have to bifurcate them into separate agencies by law.
Thank you for your explanation.
Cool, anytime.
Thank you, Mr. Hodge. Is there anyone else on the council that would like to ask a question or point of clarification?
I have a question to the city attorney related to the chief. City attorney, can you read this, the appointment of the chief? Will you please read this section? The appointment of the chief. Can you read it for me?
Sure. Mayor, would you-
Yes, go ahead.
So this is 2.10.030 of the Callexico Municipal Code. And it says, "The police chief shall be the executive officer of the police department and shall be appointed by the city manager subject to the approval of the city council to serve at the will and pleasure of the city manager and may be dismissed without cause." Subject to the approval of the city council, city manager may execute a written contract with the police chief further describing the conditions of this appointment, including modification of the at-will status.
Excuse me, Mr. Horton, please.
Okay, you already read the city ordinance. By this city ordinance, city attorney, is this legal? Is this, the appointment of the police chief is legal? That's my question.
Mayor, the Callexico Municipal Code speaks for itself. I've given my advice to the city council.
Can you give us in public?
Not at this point. Chief Bostic and I spoke tonight, and he provided information to me. Chief Bostic and I spoke tonight. He provided information to me that I haven't been made aware of until tonight. Anyhow, we're going to work on these requirements as well as he specified the post requirement. So there's a process, right? And the process will work its way out.
And I just want to add- Again, let me finish, please.
Okay.
Again-
Now I'm not comment.
He legally is the chief of police?
Mr. Mayor, pardon of order, this is not appropriate for the presentation, these type of questions.
Yeah, I think we were asking about- Mr. Castro, was it questions and clarifications on the presentation that he gave? And I think that's-
I'm talking to the city attorney.
Right.
I need a legal advice.
And I think we'll get that advice in another manner, in another session. Is that correct, city attorney? Yes, she's nodding her head for the record.
Not tonight, in a public meeting. Right, city attorney? Related to the city ordinance.
As the council is always aware, my advice to the city council is confidential, unless the city council waives the confidentiality.
Then we should keep it confidential. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Castro. Anything else, Mr. Castro, other than that?
No, no más quiero decirles que así es como se corre la ciudad. El mayor no apoya a la comunidad, ni modo. Yo puedo hablar español o en inglés, pero gracias por decirme.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Castro. No, that's okay.
I can speak Spanish or English. It all depends the desire of the people, and there's people who doesn't speak English, so I can try late in Spanish. Thank you.
Okay, alright, okay, 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 please, please. Thank you, Mr. Castro, please. We can go on to, I'm sorry, Ms. Hurtado, we can go on to the next items, unless you have something that you wanna ask our chief of police.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I don't know where's the chief of the police yet.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Kim.
I would just like to say that a lot of us in the community, including myself, think that, at this point, the gentlemen that are here, Mr. Bostic, Mr. Warren, all those individuals that are out here, in a way, it's divine intervention. Because at one point, when we had to dismiss our last police chief and put him on admond leave, there were actions that were taken that we lost our last city manager, unexpected. After that, much more activity occurred that was, there was just no explanation why all that was going on. So then that last city manager, Takata, left, and this is who we received. But these gentlemen here, they voted for him. So what's wrong with him now? What's wrong with him now? I didn't meet that city manager till thirty days after he was here. I had no idea what he was about. I voted him down. I voted him down because this process has been just unbelievable. It is not transparent, and it's embarrassing. So when I met him, I realized that he was a good guy. And I realized that what he wanted to do was just the best for you all, just like I do. But, just as the saying goes, be careful what you wish for. Because at one point, the majority of this council did not want the administration we had, which was Oscar Rodriguez, and I'm not defending Oscar. However, the instability that all of these decisions have made have hurt our city so much. It's time to stop that. And you all have seen the major support that these two gentlemen have, not only from your community, but from the law enforcement community as well. And I think that's very commendable, that you even care. I believe there was a comment last time that we were here, "What are you doing here?" And I ask myself that same question, but I guess at the end of the day, I do really believe that God brought you here, because we really, really need you.
I think he did too, so thank you.
I personally have received quite a bit of direct attacks, direct threats, direct harassment from many members of this police department. That is not funny. I don't believe that's funny, because if they treat me that way as your legal representative, or rather, your elected representative, how are they treating you? And that was my concern a year and a half ago. And I never stopped telling you that I saw a problem. And what has happened here, what you're seeing here today, that's not me, I didn't do that. Even though I get blamed for everything, that was not me. That was this council. They wanted him. So now that we have you, we don't wanna let you go. You're not going anywhere. We're gonna, we're gonna fight to make sure you're here.
I just have twenty questions I need to discuss. If that only take me an hour, I can give you the short answer. Thank you very much, chief. I appreciate your willingness to come out and speak and give us outstanding presentations here today.
You're welcome, thank you.
You may be seated.
Thank you.
Thank you.
They're passing out some information, and I think the audience had a chance to look at the information. This is in reference to a text that I was supposedly not have received. And this is a text that shows that there was a sergeant that threatened or tried to intimidate an elected official from the city of Callexico. And like I talked about that city official last week, I'm sure you have an idea who it is, it was Mr. Hodge. I'm gonna say one thing, and I want this to be very clear. No policeman should threaten a city official that's elected. That goes to the point to show the character of the person that did this. And I hope that the chief, the new chief, can look at this and see what we can do about that. This is the city of Callexico, we are the residents or citizens of Callexico, we will not tolerate this. This is something that's unacceptable for any employee, or anybody for that matter, to threaten a city official to impede an investigation or to stop the investigation. And I'm going after that sergeant. I use the word sergeant, seem like the sergeant seems to be the word to use today. That sergeant was trying to impede an investigation, but we're here now, ladies and gentlemen. And I'm saying this one point, we're not gonna, we're not gonna, no mas, no mas, we're not gonna tolerate this in Callexico. It's a time for everybody to come forth and do what is right, what you feel is right. And I left it out there, you know who's doing what to who. And this is something that was in the past. I was intimidated, I came out on certain Facebook, they even said that I was a pedophile. And I didn't answer it, because I have more important things to do than to answer something that's trash. I use the word trash. And the people that did that are trash. And we're not gonna tolerate this in Callexico, at least I won't tolerate it, and I was born in Callexico. I remember what it was like to look at this gracious group here, they were called the city fathers, and then we have some, we have something that we should regain back to what we had dignity about. And like Marisa said, this is something that was brought by the grace of God. However you conceive God to be, it was brought to us by the grace of God. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Horton. In favor of the recommendation for keeping the chief, Erica Castro. In favor of the recommendation of keeping the chief, Maria Álvarez. In favor of the recommendation of keeping the chief, María Calderón. In favor of recommendation of keeping the chief, Lydia Atrain. Atrain, I'm sorry, you told me. In favor of the recommendation of keeping the chief, Mike Davies. In favor of the recommendation of keeping the chief, Kevin Lewis. In favor of the recommendation of keeping the chief, Connie Atrain. In favor of the recommendation of keeping the chief, Ricardo Caldi Servín. In favor of the recommendation of keeping the chief, Chabela Wong. In favor of the recommendation of, in favor of the recommendation of keeping the chief, Josie Felix.
Okay, Maríbel Padilla, Aysi Nogales, I'm also in favor of keeping the chief. We've asked for this man forever. I know there's a group of us, the citizens of transparency government, and we have, we have been trying to get somebody here to help us. Finally, somebody has listened. They just thought we were a bunch of viejas that didn't know nothing, but we're not. I have one thing to say, how disrespectful it is for him and Castro to not even look at the chief when he's speaking, just act like ignore him, that is so disrespectful. I have a thing for Mr. Hodge. Right now, you just said, "The citizens come first," that's not what you said last time, you were for the union. Let me tell you, how can you say the citizens come first, when the Facebook page, Blue Flame, who is a CPOA, went out there and told everybody and gave them a phone number to call in to have me fired from my job? A lot of people called in, my job knows better. That wasn't enough, they weren't, they wanted me fired, so they didn't get that. So what happens now? Mr. Hodge walks in personally to my job, to the inspector office, "Don't act dumb, do not act dumb, you did it. You did it. This is how you treat your citizens? You're trying to get me fired because you don't like the way I speak? I don't like, no, it's not a rebuttal, be quiet. I don't like the way you talk about me. And are you gonna tell me a hundred people that go to Starbucks, and when you call me a cunt, that you didn't say that? Oh, please, Mr. Hodge, please, be a man. Come out here and talk to me in my face. Don't go behind my back and my job trying to get me fired and telling people things. I'm here, I'm not afraid of you. You all suck as councilmen. I'm sorry, decorum, yeah, but you do. I can't wait till you lose the election, and we get somebody in here that knows how to run this council, and then we're gonna vote those two dummies out."
Thank you, Ms. Padilla, and I wanna remind everyone to refrain from foul language and the use of obscenities and offensive language. In favor of the recommendation of keeping the police chief, Diego Fábila. In favor of recommendation of keeping the police chief, Fernando Villa. In favor of the recommendation of keeping the police chief, Arnold Rivera. In favor of the recommendation of keeping the police chief, Lorenzo Lenco Calderón. In favor of the recommendation of keeping the police chief, Oscar Pesquida. In favor of the recommendation of keeping the police chief, Patricia Moreno. In favor of the recommendation of keeping the police chief, Lieutenant Gonzalo Chalo Gerardo. In favor of the recommendation of keeping the police chief, Sylvia Burgos. In favor of the recommendation of keeping the police chief, Olivia Burgos. In favor of the recommendation of keeping the police chief, Carolina Valenzuela. In favor of the recommendation of keeping the police chief, Paula Escobedo.
Lolita Torres, Polisix, Las Flores Drive, seventy-year-old resident of Callexico, and very proud of Callexico, except for the past few months. I want my Callexico back. And coming from a law enforcement family, my husband was a police officer, he worked for the district attorney's office, child support. My kids are in law enforcement. My granddaughter is, works for the Los Angeles Sheriff's Office, Twin Towers. So, we respect law enforcement, that's what it's supposed to be. As of police officers that we had in the past, one of them was Quique Camarena. That's the kind of officers I wanna see back. So, we wanna welcome the chief and keep the city manager. We need you guys. We want our city back. We feel like hostages. I'm even afraid to call the police department, because I don't know who the good guys or the bad guys are. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Torres.
Good evening, my name is John Romo, and I'm a, was born and raised here in Callexico, this is the city I love. And, and I say good evening to the city council, city manager, city attorney, the whole public. I'm just gonna keep it short, I have a lot to say, and just gonna keep it short, Mr. Mayor. That was quite a, a presentation by our, our new chief of police. What I do like is, his presentation, his motivation, his direction that it's going. And first of all, I do make some notes, so I can read, but I, I'm bad at putting my notes together. But anyway, I would like to congratulate, I'm very happy and in great support for the hiring of our new chief. And number two, I'm also in great support of our city manager's decision to appoint this new chief. I, and we have a great city manager, so let's keep him, we have a great new chief, let's keep him. I already know what he's doing, and I already know, I'm already liking what he's doing. Next thing, roles. My point of view about public positions, and that's every department, is that everyone has a role, and everyone needs to know that. So, everybody needs to keep their place. Let's work together. I said it the last time, let's shake hands, let's look each other in the eye. Let's not be like, "I am afraid to call the police department, and I'm being intimidated about this." And I concur with the people that want their city back, those people that spoke, or that spoke last. But our presentation, about previous presentations, have been coming up here and saying that we need to work together, we need to co-work. Now, I don't know whether it's your night, Mr. Hodge, but you were pressured, you were pressured, you were given a phone call to hold a special meeting to get rid of our chief or our city manager, and you went for it. And hey, we hear things about the Blue Flame, I'm not even in Facebook, I don't wanna be in there. But, but, you know, I just, that's, it's trashy, and I want, I just wanna move forward. I like our, our new city manager, I like our new chief of police, and that's the way it is, let's go forward.
Thank you, Mr. Romo. In favor of the police chief, but not wishing to speak, Daniel Romero. In favor of the recommendation of keep the chief, Margy Romero. In favor of the recommendation of keeping the chief, Esperanza Servín. In favor of keeping the chief, Virginia Finney. In favor of keeping the chief, Refugio Cuco Servín.
I know a lot of family members, a lot of neighbors, I am from Callexico all my life, and except for the four past years, or that I was out for college. And it is very interesting to me that the council reacts very particular. So my question is, I will give it in Spanish, and I will give it in English. And particularly to señor Castro. Por qué, oh, por qué siento yo que usted tiene un inconveniente con el nuevo jefe de policía? And the question in English is, why do I catch or feel that you have an inconvenience with having a new police chief? That is very a personal question, that I think many of us have in mind. And if you know something that we don't, is that why you're being, or having a particular stand to being opposing to him, being a police chief? And if so, please share. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Romero. I called the JPIA yesterday, and I spoke to John Scholl, and I spoke to him because I wanna save our city. I don't want this city to go down and not have insurance, and be liable, and go broke. So I called him, and I told him what was happening. And he wrote a letter. And every council member here that is sitting at the DA's has the letter. And I'd like to give some highlights. And he says, "Thank you for your call yesterday afternoon, I appreciate your candor, and I hope you appreciate my frankness." He says, "On behalf of the entire membership, the executive committee placed the city of Callexico on a performance improvement plan, so that it would not become a burden for the rest of the membership. Actions in violations of the performance improvement plan will place the city in default of the plan, and will place the city's coverage at risk. To ensure you that you understand the seriousness of this situation, it should be noted that it will be very, very difficult for the city to obtain liability protection elsewhere. The city's loss history, combined with the perceived animosity among the city council and with executive management, will cause most commercial insurance underwriters to decline the opportunity to provide a quote. Similarly, other self-insured pools or joint power authorities will be aware of the city's experience with the California JPIA, and they will also be unlikely to provide a competitive quote for coverage." We know this, it's been going on. Some council members don't understand it, that's why I'm saying it today. As the city council considers the level of its involvement in personnel activities, I would encourage you to allow the trained professionals to execute the administration of the city in a manner you have authorized as a city council by providing policy and The executive committee is concerned about the actions taken by the city of Callexico and has requested the attendance of the entire city council Wednesday, November nineteenth. We're all going up to La Palma. In addition, emphasizing the importance of maintaining pool risk. In closing, he told me that had we fired the manager at the last meeting, that would have been it. We wouldn't have had insurance, we couldn't have, we couldn't have done anything. They're getting ready to do this January 1, 2015. I want this council to wake up and know what its roles and responsibilities are. Let's save our city! Enough is enough! I hope you read that letter. I hope you gentlemen read that letter. Thank you. My three minutes are up, my three minutes are up. Thank you, Mr. Kim. Ms. Hurtado, three minutes.
The young lady that just made the comment right now, that was a wonderful speech, what you said, it's awesome for kids to come back to Callexico and wanna participate in your government. It's an exciting time, maybe, it's all kinds of stuff going on, lots of people in our council chambers, but as the mayor has said, this is a really serious time. You said something interesting to me, and to, I guess, the mayor as well, since the mayor and I feel that these issues have common opinions. When, we went through the process when we lost Chief Newjar, we went through a very politically motivated and politically intense hiring of what ended up having as our chief, Inspector Mars. I saw it happen, we all did. The city attorney saw it happen. And we all know what happened back there. The manner in which that was, that was handled, in my opinion, was something I always talk about. I don't hide my feelings, I've been very vocal. And as that young lady asked, it's a fair question to ask Mr. Castro, why he's feeling this way, when the citizens, and Mr. Hodge and Mr. Kim, it's fair, because all of you are here telling him what you guys want. And you all are the individuals who pay us, and who are on the top of the food chain. So as far as my opinion, in the last, because I am criticized for that too, in the last event that we had to go through, I like my, I like to do work in the light, just like our new chief says, transparent. I've always been like that. But during that period of time, it wasn't transparent, and I was absolutely frustrated. So I did give my opinion out there, and if I talked a little too much, I apologize, but I am a very frank person, and I think that you all deserve that. And the fact that I was trying to tell you all what was going on, and as delicately as I can, and as, and protecting the information of any ongoing investigations or unauthorized information that I just can't share with you, it was excruciatingly difficult. However, I don't wanna say the words I told you, so it's not that, I don't wanna do that, ever. But I do wanna tell you that some of us do realize, the path that we had to follow to get here, some of us are in denial. And that's all I can tell you, is that people ask me, "What's wrong, what's wrong with them? Why is it that they can't listen to the citizens and understand that the citizens want this? They want change, they want to improve, why?" And the only thing I can tell you is that there's some serious denial going on. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hurtado. Who would like to go next?
I'm glad to see our last faces here, today, saying what they want. That's one of the, one of the steps of the democracies. And sometimes, the larger number gets what they want, but the larger numbers they are hiding, they don't get anything. I didn't, I didn't understand when they said, "Poor is sin, poor is guilty." But during my immigration life in the United States, and I understand, a lot of people, they don't show them to, they try to, they don't try to not to get away from this poor, that's why people say, "Poor is guilty." The same thing is today, a lot of people, they are, they are calling me, they're telling me what's going on, but they're not, they're not here, they're not speak. Even they are here, they're not speak. Even they are here, they're not speak. Nonetheless, if Mr. Moreno wasn't bringing the JPIA, we're gonna be almost ready to kick out from the JPIA. The most of the JPIAs was to bring the, a lot of, you might remember last year's letters from the JPIA, a lot of cases for the past case, not recent case. And past case, you four of the council member, or council member, at that time, for former administration, they've been causing a lot, a lot of cases to reliability, reliability of the city of Callexico. That, when I'm getting here, we try to fix those problem, that systematically, there's been there, tried to fix the problem. I see a lot of registrants, registrants from that, the founded, or the foundation of the compa system, they are still registering to not losing their power, to they can do what they want. So a lot of people, they've been arrested last, last couple months or year ago. If former administration was there, they not happen, they gonna be all executed. That's a good example. Today, so much allegation came out, that is allegation. I don't know that allegation gonna be, gonna be factual or not, that is, has to be from the investigation.
Number 10, the resolution of the city council and to approve a professional service agreement with a professional recruiting firm to recruit the position of city manager authorizing the mayor to execute the set agreement. There's a motion on the floor by Ms. Hurtado to not enter in this agreement. Is there a second? I will second.
Have discussions?
It's, it's up to me. No discussion. We've had a discussion already. So please vote. If you agree to not approve, you vote yes. Motion does not carry. So now we'll bring it back and entertain another motion, Mr. Kim.
Motion to approve it.
Motion to approve by Mr. Kim. Is there a second?
Second for discussion?
Second. Oh, well, second for discussion by Ms. Hurtado.
Another comment that I'd like to make about this issue.
Excuse me, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait, wait, we have.
Mr. Castro said second, second for.
That I had to say it, but she was first this time, and she seconded for discussion. Please give a brief discussion. Go ahead, Ms. Hurtado.
Two meetings ago, the city council indicated that they would wait until such time that the elections have gone by, allowing the manager's position to stay stable, and that the manager's position would not be touched for the appropriate given time. There is actually a municipal code here that talks about removal of office of a city manager. And what that says is that during a campaign or 90 days after an election, you don't touch the city management, as far as my interpretation. The issue here is that two meetings ago, this council gave you guys a promise and said, "We're not gonna touch this. We're not gonna let it become political. So why are we even doing this again? We will very soon, which is November the 4th, know if there's gonna be a change in this council. And it's only fair to stop the politicalness of this manager's position and of this chief of police's position in this very political time."
May I have clarification because I'm concerned what you're saying.
So I do not agree with asking the citizens to pay more money to search for someone else when they want him.
All right. Hold on, hold, please, point of order. We're gonna, it's only the council that's discussing this at this time.
Clarification.
You have clarification? Need clarification? And then you'll go, and then Mr. Kim will go.
So based on what Marisa's saying, we, we could bring this up after the election.
Yes.
No, wait.
Hold on. We, we can bring it up. Right now, there's a motion to approve as is, second by Ms. Hurtado.
But we could hold on it and bring it up after the election.
It depends how we vote right now. It depends how we vote right now.
All right, I'm, I'm gonna change my vote.
Okay, all right. Mr. Kim, go ahead.
Yes. Okay, first of all, the first of all, this one is now we talking about the city manager's positions to hire, city managers to fire or keep him. We just opened the process to stabilizing the city. Even the Mr. Juan, he can apply the position, to open the, open the positions. Okay?
Okay. Uh, okay, all right.
So we all open the position to stabilizing the, the city, to the, let the process going on.
This is for.
As a cost of the money, we've been, we've been doing last time without the hiring the form, we have, we have so much instability in the, several times already. The interim city manager will come and go. So this time, we'd like to have, have a form to, hire the form to, the cost is $30,000, but still, it's a value for the city that we have to spend, sometimes we have to spend.
Please, please, okay, Mr. Kim, I get your point.
Yeah, I'm wrapping up.
I know, wrap up, please.
So this is a good chance to, we give the, send the signal to the city to stabilizing our city, to open the, hiring the form, open the process to, to get the, get the real city manager instead of the interim city manager.
Thank you. There is a motion by Mr. Kim. Any other further discussion?
Okay, wait a minute.
Okay, the motion is to approve as is. Please erase that. Because the other motion did not carry, we cannot bring it back.
Can't bring it back.
We can't bring it back.
Okay.
I know what I'm doing, please.
He does.
Okay? So please erase that. That is not, that is not accurate. Mr. Kim had a motion to approve as is, Ms. Hurtado seconded it. Now, Ms. Hurtado seconded for discussion. Now I'd like to vote on it. To approve, to recruit a firm to search for at this point in time. Motion does not carry.
I've been asking for a report that'll give us some type of a, of a plan, some type of a action plan, as far as how this overtime will really be controlled. I never got that in a year and a half. You think you can help us with that? That way we can kind of understand, the citizens are really angry at the fact that it went so far as to the 1.4 million over, and they want to know what happened in order to be able to avoid that it not happen in the future. So if you can provide a, a report for that, that'd be lovely. Thank you.
Thank you. That took 30 seconds.
Wow. Please, let's not forget what I proposed last time. If you need me at the table, the senior citizens commission, I really believe in that, please. The other, so that was the last one. The, the other one is, well, I, I think we need, as soon as we can, a, a meeting on, on the pool, and, and I want to be part of that. The, the other, the other thing is, I, I think we should renew, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Mayor, but at one time, did we used to have like quarterly joint meetings with Callexico Unified School District?
We had them as needed.
Oh, as needed?
Right.
I, I, I think that maybe we should be a little more consistent and think about having them every three months. Come together and, and share information and, and move forward on, on common items.
Well, one thing that you mentioned was a town hall, but.
Well, we haven't done that for a long time.
Okay, thank you for your minute. Go ahead.
I'd like to put on the next agenda, the November 5th, the next media agenda for the how we gonna write on the farewell plaque for the Mr. Hodge and Ms. Hurtado's farewell from the city council, how it being serviced.
Okay, well, we did our best. I, I guess Mr. Kim is questioning the wording on the farewell plaque.
So I would like to put in the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Kim. Okay, Mr. Castro, you have one minute.
Yes, I, again, I would like to have the, the update on the forfeiture money, uh, forfeiture money update, Mr. Richard Warren. It's been three months, so I hope next council meeting, you bring the update on that. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Castro. And Mr. Tuesday Night Live is now over. Meeting adjourned.